We got to get some spots. There's eight things with the camera.
I like this. I like this.
We still have to get my old westy fingers.
We're looking at that kid.
Yeah. Eight year olds finally get to the age where he can actually participate. So when he went, he was six. He was just watching.
It's always where we're at.
All right.
Be pretty hard for them.
Okay, I got a 6:02 in October. We have a sworn present. I call this meeting of the Upson County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll start off with the invocation with Pastor Shields and then we'll do the pledge.
Father God, it comes to you in the name of Jesus. And we bless the government and local authorities here in Upson County. And thank you so much that they even make room for your name to be brought into these spaces. And so we bless them. We pray blessing on them. And as your scriptures say, that you have shown us what is required of us, that we love justice, we do mercy, and walk humbly. And I pray for that in this evening's decisions and even thoughts. Father, give us thoughts from your heart so that this county stays in your will, stays blessed. Father, we pray abundance of your nature and your blessings on this county. And I thank you for this team and those that have done things behind the scenes to make this meeting even come about. I bless their families, Father. I pray peace and just a guidance over their personal lives, that they can continue to do the things here at this level. Father, we pray also for the fatherless and the widow, that those that are in this community at that level, that is, those are the closest ones to your heart. And I pray that the decisions today would reflect a position that we are fighting for the fatherless and widow, even at this level. We bless this time. May it be an honor to you and Jesus, and we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up is approval of agenda.
May I make a motion?
I recognize, go ahead.
Take a motion. Edit the agenda. Is Mr. Richard Phillips here by chance? May I make a motion that we remove the old business?
Can I add, can I ask you?
Now.
We need to take action on it. So if you're not gonna, I mean, he's not here to answer your question. So if you're gonna deny or approve the license, we need to go ahead and take action on it. So I think it should remain on the agenda.
Withdraw your motion. Any other motions on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that I can't see the agenda down far enough, but I'd like to move, if I can find it here, presentation.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, what we're talking about. Yep. I would like to move that up to the, so we can hear the judges speak and they can get back to their respective homes outside of Upson County.
Do I have a motion, Commissioner Ellington, to move item I up to the beginning of new business?
I'll second.
I'll second. Get a vote.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeks?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
The rest of the agenda is okay?
Okay.
I might approach with approved of the agenda. Approved the agenda after the change. Second.
Second.
Commissioner Washington, second.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeks?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. First item up is public comments. I have, hopefully I can get this right. Kevin?
Judon.
Judon.
Yes.
All right. If you would please, just come to one of the Xs here, so you're under the mic. State your name.
The mic?
There's a mic above your head right here.
That's this way.
Just so we can hear you.
I'm just concerned about this data center. I live on Andrews Chapel Road.
Excuse me, sir. I just need you to state your name and then start the clock.
My name's Kevin Judon. I live on Andrews Chapel Road. This data center's gonna go right across the road from me. It's gonna be 1,400 acres. It's 12,000 foot built, 1,000 by 200. That's a city block. There's gonna be 12 of them over there. They're gonna be lit up all night, fans running, air conditioning. Where's the water coming from? Who's gonna fight all the bugs that are gonna be out there? And I, you know, but they've already backdoored Pike County and one in Fayette County. I don't want that to happen here. So I talked to Mr. Biggs here a month ago, and he failed to call me that time I called you. So a month ago, I was supposed to get some feedback. I got nothing. So I don't know if there's, this is gonna be a backdoor deal. I don't know. But there's, all my neighbors are upset. There's a bunch of people on the east side. There's about 50 homes over there that are upset too. So I don't know whether or not anybody's come down. I've been out of town too, so, but I want y'all to know what's, what's the plan. I don't believe they haven't talked to y'all about it, and I just don't believe it. Because I've had people at different offices around here, and they said that back in May, it was talked about in May. So I just wanna know what y'all think, what y'all plan is, or talk about it, is there plans for it? That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next up is old business, consideration of a beer and wine package sales license for Richard Phillips on behalf of Phillips 91 LLC located at 398 Mark and Lutha King, Thomaston, Georgia. And the applicant is not present?
No, sir.
Okay.
We requested for him to be present to answer a few questions, but he's not here. So I will make a motion to deny his request.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Beeks and a second from Commissioner Jones to deny beer and wine license for Richard Phillips.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeks?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item up is the consent agenda. These are items that we have already covered. This is the minutes from the regular meeting on September 23rd, minutes from our work session on October 7th, and approval of the contract for the cleaning of the Justice Center. Any?
Motion to.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Jones.
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Ellington.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeks?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We're gonna move into new business. And the first order of new business, we're gonna move down here to a presentation from Chief Judge Ballard on the Circuit Operating Agreement and Employee Salaries. Welcome.
Thank you. Where do you want us to sit at the table? Okay, very good. As you may know, I'm Scott Ballard. I'm the Chief Judge of the Griffin Judicial Circuit. I'm here with Will Simmons, who is our District Court Administrator, and Judge Ben Miller, who's one of our five Superior Court Judges. I'm gonna defer, if I will, if you don't mind, to Mr. Simmons, and we'll be available for any questions that you might have.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners, for having to be in front of you again today. Mr. Joyce, it's good to put a face with a name. You're welcome. Again, my name is Will Simmons. I'm the District Court Administrator. So basically, I handle the budget and fiscal affairs for the Griffin Judicial Circuit, which is in surprise of the four counties. What we're here to talk to you about tonight is not necessarily the annual governmental agreement that's on the agenda. That's still being worked on. That's something we're gonna work with the county attorneys on to basically come up with a framework of how we're funded and how we move forward in the future, because there's so many questions about how the circuit is. We're the third branch of government, it's kinda different from other departments. So we're working on that. What we're here to talk about tonight are two items. First being the judicial compensation that was passed by the General Assembly this, this year. It was actually House Bill 85. We sent the information over, so hopefully you have that in front of you. What that is, Commissioners, is the, the, the objective is to roll counties off of supplementing judicial judges, but it's gonna take some time. What we're gonna, what they have done is pass a raise for judges on the state side of their salary. That will become effective January 1 of 2026. Right now, you all, the four counties, the circuit pays the judges a supplement. That supplement, if the judges opt into this plan, they have an option to opt in or opt out of this new payment situation where they could accept the new salary beginning January 1, or just stay where they are and continue with their supplement. Our judges have elected to opt in to the new judicial pay system, which means they will get the new state salary, but the supplement that this circuit pays will decrease for each judge by $30,000. So $30,000 times five judges in our circuit is a savings of $250,000. And so we're asking for your support on that. Again, the long-term goal of the legislature is to wean the circuits off of this unfunded mandate of paying us supplements. So that's the first thing. There's another piece, before I get to the second, regarding our retired judges, how that affects them. I'll let Judge Ballard talk to, talk to them.
Yes. You've been candid when you've paid us supplements through the years to, if we retire and if we take senior judge status, which basically means you're a substitute judge when needed, then we receive two-thirds of the supplement that we would, that we were receiving before we retired, for retirement, for the rest of the time that we serve as senior judges. And that was wonderful. That was really wonderful to do. We're asking if you will agree to this locality pay, is what it's now called, that you also include a provision so that we can continue to pay senior judges a portion of that for as long as the locality pay exists. The reason, and I'm just gonna be straight with you, the, the reason that that's most important to me is I look at other counties who have senior judges who use them thoroughly, and they keep from having to get new judges. If, I haven't seen this year's numbers, but recent year's numbers suggest that in our circuit, we're probably qualified for a sixth Superior Court Judge. Now, I don't know if that will be, would be even asked for, let alone granted, but it's not nearly as necessary if we've got active senior judges. And Judge Fletcher Samms expects to retire early this year. We would be able to continue to use him as well as the new judge that would come in to replace him, and my mind is just filled with, with ways that we might be able to do that to help benefit everybody. Before I quit talking, I wanna thank y'all for our new Justice Center. You may have noticed that there aren't many of these awards that give out, there aren't many places in the state of Georgia that are reducing their caseload, but Upson County got an award for doing just that. And I think that the credit for that doesn't go to us judges, it goes to y'all for giving us a Justice Center so that we can have simultaneous court and tackle this backlog. It helps the sheriff, it gets people out of the jail, it helps citizens who have matters pending that they need to have resolved, it helps victims who need closure. It's exactly what we need to be doing, and I can't thank you enough for that building. Thank you for your kind consideration for our request today as well.
Before you go any further?
Yes.
I wanna thank you for saying that.
We know you've caught a lot of heat over this, and I think Commissioner Watson told me one day at the Wellness Center that whenever you build something, somebody gets voted out of office, and, and that, that is a true statement, but it truly is giving us the ability to move cases. We can have two jury, jury trials at the same time, and I finished two weeks, about two weeks ago, and I think we concluded almost 200 cases just in that two week time. Not count what Judge Samms is doing as well.
We were talking to the sheriff today, and he told us how fast y'all were going through and helping him get people out of the jail. And so I appreciate it and hope Dave puts this out there. And I'll let you finish your presentation. I just wanted to thank y'all.
Thank you.
So in combination of that, that first request of, of supporting, again, the lesser supplement that's paid by the counties is tied into our second ask for support. As you all know, we have 14 circuit employees, and Fayette County for the last, I think, 10 years have been our accountants. We moved from Spalding 10 years ago to Fayette. So sometimes in Fayette, because most of them are Fayette County employees, when Fayette County gives their employees a bump or an increase, cost of living or what have you, our employees are separate and apart, and they're kinda left out. What we're asking for, and they, they recently just approved a 6.25% increase for the Fayette County employees. Again, I think maybe 95% of our employees are Fayette County employees, under the payroll and insurance and all that good stuff. With the support of the opting in to the new pay, which is a lesser amount of supplements paid to the judges, if you would support to the 6.25, the savings of the 250 would be absorbed in that, kinda makes the budget neutral, if you all were to support letting our judicial employees have the 6.25%. We also provide you with a budget sheet that kinda breaks down what the numbers are, and we would not even ask for this like right now, because the judge's situation would come into effect January 1 of 2026. If you all were to support this, we would, at that time, then ask for the support of our circuit employees for the 6.25 again, which would be budget neutral because of the savings that we, we will have to pay the judges in terms of supplements. And there would be a savings, I think over the year, I think $30,000 we have here, that would be absorbed by the locality pay, the lesser amount. I don't know if that's clear, so we're happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
Go ahead.
So just so we're clear here, there's two separate issues?
Yes, sir.
That will not issue requests?
Yes, sir.
All right. So just refresh me, is, is the circuit not on a mid-year budget, or is that just a DA's office? I guess that's a staff question.
The circuit runs from Jan, July 1 to June 3.
Okay. All right. So, but this, if, by y'all opting in, it's effective on the judges January 1?
Correct.
Okay. So essentially, you need our decision on that pretty quick.
Yes, sir.
The second part, we're, we're right in the middle of our budget process right now, and, and I'm just speaking as Commissioner Ellington. We, you know, we, we really gotta determine what we're gonna do across the board for, for our staff before we would be ready to give any projections on that. So I guess the, to tackle this, the pressing issue is the opt-in or opt-out. Y'all opting in, y'all asking us to opt into that. If that's my understanding, you're asking us to give you a decision on that. So based upon that, the, the second part of this that came in tonight, that, that's something we just gotta dig into.
So, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. So $20,106 per judge in the circuit. There's five judges, right?
Yes, sir.
I get it. So that's $100,000 annually, and that's, that's divided amongst the four counties equally?
Yes, sir.
Not equal.
Not equal. It's the population.
Population.
Okay. So I don't know what our portion is.
Yeah. But, but, but I, I mean, I guess what our portion is, our portion would be the 20,000, basically $20,000 from?
No. Your portion, I think it's based on?
It is on population. So, yeah, I don't know what that breakdown is, so.
Well, Fayette County will be approximately half of it, and then the other three counties would be split, and Spalding's gonna come out paying more than y'all would. Am I right about that, Commissioner?
So, so that figure you gave for us, that was, that was a circuit figure, that savings. That was a total circuit figure.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Allen, you?
Yeah, you save $150,000 a year for the circuit. Okay. Yeah, I think it sounds good on its face. I think we just need to make sure we understand everything, and we are going through the budget process, so.
And Chairman Brew, if, if it's okay, we did provide, our team provided to Mr. Joyce a resolution regarding the 10%, which is 30,000 less per judge for the supplements for y'all, y'all's consideration when you convene.
I think we actually already sent that to you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Can I, can I ask you two? I mean, so let's just be honest here, I'm a straight shooting guy. We, we don't really care what those other counties, but we just wanna know what our system is.
Yes, sir.
That's what we're looking for. If you can give us that number?
Yes, sir.
It'll be a quick decision from that number. Just tell us what Upson County's portion savings, saving, the big key savings is gonna be, and that, that should be a pretty quick.
We can do that tonight. Our C P is from Upson County.
But can you understand the reasoning behind that? I mean, you know, it's just easier, you know, our citizens are gonna wanna know, we're gonna be able to tell them, and if we know, hey, this is.
It's exactly what I'd do if I was in there, Chairman.
Yeah. So we had budget hearings today, and we'll have a work session.
Next week.
Next Wednesday. So we just need to be able to see, this is what we were doing, this is what we're gonna do, and then hopefully in November, we can just put that resolution on the.
Right. And you, and you, you provide us that resolution?
Yes, sir. Mr. Joyce, it's all right. Yes, sir.
And Mr. Chair, we've already, I know y'all had budgeted this at the increased supplement rate, and so it's gonna be a win-win for y'all. I think I communicated with Mr. Ellington about that, that regardless, y'all will save money, but just the specific number is gonna be pro-rata, based on whatever y'all contributed to the process.
And then?
And it's gonna be good for everybody, and rightfully so. You know, the state should be paying the lion's share of judges' salaries instead of locality people, and so that's what they're trying to phase out through this process.
And then one more question on the senior judges, right? So is that circuit-wide, is that, is that the same kind of a ratio?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right.
Sure is. And I wish I knew the number right now off the top of my head, that, you know, the percent that, that y'all pay. I guess we can find that. If we come up with that number tonight, do y'all want it tonight? Is that, are you wanting, are you wanting us to just communicate that?
Just communicate.
Okay. And we'll do that.
What's that, what's that, what's that?
Tonight.
And I think we can just plan for the session in November to do a vote, so everybody's tracking.
Yes, sir.
Would you like for us to attend in November as well?
If you want to.
If you want.
If you're happy or you wanna be sad.
Yeah. If you have questions, let us know. We'll be glad to attend and answer those questions, or contact us in, in our time. We'd be glad to answer the question.
I think we should be square away by the work session next week.
In the last book, I asked, you know, and I just know from our local read, I think y'all presenting maybe to Pike or somebody tomorrow.
We have some judges at Pike right now.
Right. Has any, is, is any board taking action at this point?
No, I don't think so. We're trying, focused on trying to get all October, and everybody got busy, us and Upson and Pike's in the same night, and I know we've got Spalding and Fayette in November coming up.
Right, right. Maybe we can get it all handled a little bit better.
Yes, sir. Mr. Joyce has my contacts. I'll be happy to come back or answer any questions you want me to have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item up is discussion and consideration of an exemption from the moratorium on any and all subdivisions of real property in Upson County established in Resolution 14 dot 2025, a parcel number 031045 Alpha located at 2153 Hannah's Mill Road. Is there a presentation for this, or a rep?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is William Michael Russell. I'll be the one that's taking the 10 acres from my dad, William A. Russell, looking to retire, move back to Thomaston, wanna build a house here, see my grandkids raised on the farm like I was. Just asking for an exemption to the moratorium, so I can start.
So it's to, it's to split 10 acres, excuse me, 10 acres off of how large of a?
78. 78 plus 6.
Okay. And there, is there another title on the list? Is that a different number on here, or is it, we just added on?
So it's the same parcel.
Yeah.
They're doing the first split with the 10 acres, and then there's another split with a different, for a different person, that's one acre.
Okay.
So this is the 10 acre split.
Okay.
You see it? And then that is the additional one acre.
So they combined in the one acre into the larger tract.
Yeah.
Same thing, that's right.
Yeah, there's a, my understanding, it was a 17 acre tract.
Yes.
That neighbors it, and they're gonna put one acre.
Right.
So that's gonna be an 18 acre tract and a 77.6 acre tract and a 10 acre tract. When we get said and done.
Yes. Yes, and on that, I live on that 17 and a half acre tract, and that one acre, all my stuff is sloping, and I wanna put a little shed behind my house, and so I was talking about finding an acre for Mr. Russell, 'cause it's flat land right there behind it.
I'm sorry, your name?
I'm Nathan Mann.
Okay.
And that way I can build a little shed back there to put, you know, put my stuff in and join it to my 17 and a half, so it'll be 18 and a half total.
Can, can you go back to another map? Well, that's fine, too. That may actually show me, do the survey, that may show me, how many, how much road frontage is that left on that one?
The one acre is, is actually behind.
What about the?
On this one here?
Yeah, this one right here.
Like 300? 580? No. Slow down, slow down.
260.
260.
It's hard to see on the tax map.
And then that other one acre's way in the back?
Yes, sir.
No roads running?
Right, no roads running. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve this. This obviously fits within our current moratorium and potential of future moratorium approvals, so I don't see personally any issue, and this does fall within my district.
I have a recommendation to approve the, what's the proper word? Able to present their plat?
Right. We need to clarify, I think there's confusion by some of the folks that go to, they think they're being granted a plat.
Right.
And I'd like to, hopefully, what we're saying is that you're now gotten permission to enter into the process. Because this is a split into three, and without the moratorium, they would normally bring a split into three through the administrative review of the process. So I guess you needed to decide, are you granting them full permission or permission to now enter into the subdivision process?
Enter into the process.
That's how we've done it.
But we don't have to go back and vote on it?
No, it'll all be at the administrative level at that point.
Right. Because it's a split into three, there's no new roads, there is no new infrastructure, the administrative review, but what you see before you is far simpler. Our ordinance requires a lot more detail than what the state minimum is for a plat.
Well, the only reason I said that, it's entered the process, and then it goes back through, and it's gotta go back to somebody else, and then back to us?
No.
Yeah, okay.
It would be administratively approved, as long as they meet all the requirements. I approve it, or ask the surveyor to make the changes, then approve it, and they're underway.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Ellington to approve entering into the administrative process, and I have a second, Commissioner Jones.
Commissioner, Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item up is discussion and consideration of exemption from the moratorium on any and all subdivisions of real property in Upson County, established in Resolution fourteen dot twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, located at Poe Diddy Road, parcel number zero three seven zero two two. We have an applicant present for this, or a presentation?
So she sent me an email this afternoon, it was during the meeting, sorry. She was not able to attend, so she was gonna withdraw until next time if the moratorium was still underway.
So she's withdrawing now totally?
Until next time.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, discussion and consideration of exemption from the moratorium on any and all subdivisions of real property in Upson County, established in Resolution fourteen dot twenty twenty-five, located at Old Alabama Road, parcel number zero one six zero four six. Do we have an applicant or presentation?
My name is Steve Hudson, and I live at thirty-five fifty-two Old Alabama Road. I wanna split off some acreage to give my son to build a house.
All right, and it's a twenty-three acre plot currently, and you wanna, how much is the, how much are you giving your son?
I won't know the size of the lot until the surveyor, but here we're around three or four acres.
Is the circle area, the area in question, the red line?
That's why we're even putting on that picture up there.
The circle area is the area.
Is this where you're gonna put it, Mr. Stephen?
Yes.
All right, could say it's, what's it, three point eight? Is it, is it three point eight nine, Mr. Hudson?
My whole lot, my whole property is twenty-three acres.
Okay, all right.
The part that you're cutting out is about three point eight nine acres?
It's between three and four acres.
Yeah, that's, that's...
Parker is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not three point eight nine, yeah, that's just where it is.
Any questions or discussions by any of the board members? This is, this is A R, currently?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I guess this, even under our, obviously under our current ordinance, just on moratorium, this is allowable, and our ordinance that we're looking at, I think we've all expressed a pathway for situations that require something similar here, you know, and I have been a harsh advocate of sticking by that, but under these circumstances, I think one of the things that we all discuss is when you're, when you're looking to do something for a family member, you're, you're, you know, we wanna, I guess, to use your word, we're looking, there needs to be a path.
Yes.
So with that being said, instead of keep beating the drums, I'll make a motion, we approve this, as a former commissioner, longtime citizen, you know, I don't think you've had any ill intent here.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve, let me get the motion right, is approve to go into the process?
It's a simple split, so it does not go through the process.
Okay, but it has to be measured out?
You would still sign the plat though, right, before it go?
No. A simple split does not go administratively or to the planning committee.
Okay, I think I'd wanna...
Make sure there's enough road frontage.
According to this, between that marker, this, you know, three...
Yeah, just making sure it's not like three acre, you know, with a little bit of road frontage.
I would, I would say we need to put a road frontage and a minimum three acre in the motion.
Are you, basically what we wanna do is put a minimum road frontage and a minimum three acres?
The way I have it planned, it's gonna be about three hundred feet.
Okay.
Three forty-four point seven two.
Okay, so in the motion, it'd be approximately three hundred foot and three or more acres.
He got it on the second page here, that's, that's another diagram. It's that same code here. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
What's this?
Zoom back up.
It's three forty-four point seventy-two.
I'm trying to see, it's how much?
Three forty-four point seventy-two.
Okay. All right, so minimum three hundred road footage and a minimum three hundred, three acres. All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Ellington, a second, still from Commissioner Jones.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next item up is discussion and consideration of exemption from the moratorium on any and all subdivisions of real property in Upson County, established in Resolution fourteen dot twenty-five, I'm on the right one, located at Frankendale Drive, parcel number zero four two zero four four.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Bill. Let me speak to you tonight. My name is Frank Martin, live at two thirty-five Frankendale Road. I have fourteen acres there, and I'm seventy years old and declining health, I need to get rid of some of it, so I don't, I can't take care of it anymore. I wanna sell ten and a half acres and keep three and a quarter acres where my house is. Both pieces, one I'm keeping, I'll have three hundred and seventy-five feet of frontage, the other one I have about four fifty.
Okay. This is very similar to what we just did. Any discussion, any concerns? I would just say we'd use that same motion, at least three hundred foot road frontage, at least three acres.
Three seventy-five, I already had it surveyed out.
I'll second your motion.
All right, and I have a second from Commissioner Ellington.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up, discussion and consideration of an exemption from the moratorium on any and all subdivisions of real property in Upson County, established in Resolution fourteen dot twenty-five, located on Crest Highway, parcel number zero three three zero zero five and zero three four zero zero nine.
Good evening, commissioners, my name's Cal Garrison, thank you. The blue track, the blue outline track is a property that we, well, I guess I currently own both of them, and the one of, unfortunately, or fortunately, whatever you want to look at, I didn't have any road frontage. The family that owned the property there on Crest Highway agreed to sell it to me and purchase that back in August. We already have a house that we built back in the blue track, there's one up front, there's a widow who came to me about the house up front, her son lives on, over back in that neck of the woods somewhere, and the subdividing, I'd like to ask for consideration to subdivide approximately three point four acres. The total road frontage of that track there is one thousand one hundred and thirty-three feet, it would exceed three hundred feet of road frontage with that house and shop there, that beats on to a lady that lives close to her son.
And that's all fronting up saving the four, right?
Yes, sir.
Right, Dr. Morgan's place.
Eight one there.
Okay, we're trying to cut this out of this?
Yeah, that, that red line right there is essentially a yard, it extends back into the woods a little bit, there's, or with the well that goes with that house, obviously we'll put the well inside of that property line, but Nash Austin, I think, is the surveyor with EMC, I'm working with, to make sure that, A, it has enough road frontage, it's a adjoining property there on the other side of Dr. Morgan, is a three acre track as well, but anyway, that's...
Are you gonna be leaving this portion of separate parcel, or are you gonna be combining it with the big?
I'd like to adjoin the two into one track as soon as, or pending your hopeful approval of it.
And we're just cutting out that?
That house.
You're getting the whole big piece, and we're cutting out the red line corner of that?
Yes, correct, sir.
He doesn't have that.
Okay, well, you know, all right. So you, you are, along with this, Chris, you're gonna be combining this with... Mr. Chairman, I got a motion, once again, this is in my district, I'm familiar with this property, I'll make a motion that we approve the separation of the track, of the three and, at least three and a quarter, at least three and a quarter?
Yes, sir.
Of an acre, with at least three hundred foot of road frontage on Seventy-four Highway, and for the, I don't have parcel numbers, but for the track remainder of that track to be incorporated into the larger track, and for that to be, at least, this is, in my opinion, in a combination, I would at least like staff to sign off on that, review that, to make sure that happens, if surveyor, just like, they don't know what...
They know what you're talking about.
They know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Just have staff, staff's approval of that, and my motion is to approve with those recommendations.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Ellington to divide off at least three hundred foot road frontage and three plus acres from the parcel on Crest Highway, and then join the remainder of that parcel to his other parcel. Simple enough?
And have that submitted.
And reviewed by staff.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Watson.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I go to my son's little again?
Sorry about that, if we know, we could've made some...
No, please do it, please do it. Thank you.
All right, next item up is discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty-seven dot twenty twenty-five, Upson County, Georgia Board of Commissioners declaring its intention to convey real estate to the state of Georgia for use by the Georgia State Patrol Post twenty-six. All right, can you read that for me?
Whereas Article Six, Section Two, and Article, Paragraph One of the state constitution provides that the Upson County Board of Commissioners, as the governing authority of Upson County or the county, shall have legislative power to adopt clearly reasonable ordinance, resolution regulations relating to its properties, affairs, and local government, for which no provisions have been, has been made by the general law and which it is not inconsistent with the Constitution, and whereas the Upson County Board of Commissioners, the county owns certain real property identified as parcel number zero five seven C zero two three in Upson County, Georgia, consisting of seven point two two acres of land and improvement property located at two eight one Nitre, Thompson, Georgia, and whereas since July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, twenty oh six memorandum of agreement, the Department of Public Safety, DPS, has occupied and used the property for Georgia State Patrol Post twenty-six, Thompson, Georgia, for one dollar per year, and whereas on January sixth, two thousand seventeen, the State Properties Commission facilitated a conversion of the M O A to a rental agreement whereby Upson County was landlord, the tenant, and DPS the subtenant of or occupying agency of the property, and in the two thousand seventeen rental agreement, which provided for DPS to pay one dollar per year to the county for occupying the property expired on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and in or around two thousand twenty, the DPS Communications Tower has been, was constructed and sighted on the property, and the county has, and whereas the county has determined that it is in the best interest of the citizens of the county that the G P, G S P post continues to be located in Upson County, and whereas the county desires to transfer the property by warranty deed to the state of Georgia for the uses of the Department of Public Safety, with the provisions that the property shall revert to the county in the event it ceases to be used by the State Patrol Post in accordance, in accordance with O C G A thirty-five two forty-one and thirty-five two forty-one one, and now therefore be it resolved that the above described track of seven point two two acres, together with improvements their own, shall be conveyed by warranty deed to the state of Georgia, subject only to the right of reversion to Upson County, should be, should the state cease to operate the property as the Georgia State Patrol Post headquarters and barracks, and be it further resolved that the chairman of Upson County, of the Upson County Board of Commissioners and the county clerk are authorized and directed to prepare, sign, and execute any and all documents necessary to execute this conveyance, resolved this twentieth day of October, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, so as you know, at the beginning of the year, we visited a state patrol post out here on Nitre, they have been paying one dollar rent for a while, and our county taxpayers have been paying to maintain this building because we own it, so what we're doing, proposing to do here, is to transfer the building to the state of Georgia, to the State Properties Commission, and they will not pay us a dollar anymore.
And we don't have...
But we will not pay for...
Thousands of dollars.
Air conditioning units, and flooring, or any plumbing, or any of that, right? So it's a good deal for the taxpayers of Upson County. It has to go before the State Properties Commission to be approved, they need a resolution from us, and I think they meet next month, so we just wanted to get this before us tonight, and any questions or comments from the board members?
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Watson.
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Ellington.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Okay, next item is a discussion and consideration of Poe Diddy Road Bridge Project.
That would be me, Mr. Chairman, Poe Diddy Road Bridge Repair is something that's been discussed for a while, the result of a state E O T inspection, which was followed up by another inspection by EMC, necessary repairs were needed to be made to the structure of that bridge, EMC took care of or assisted us with bidding this project out, we had two bidders that submitted bids, one bid was for nine hundred and twenty, forty thousand, the other at four hundred and twenty-three, seven fifty. Obviously, the lowest bid is the one we recommended, but not only they were the lowest bid, they were also the most responsive, and based on the references they provided, EMC suggested or was recommending that we choose this contractor and let this project as soon as possible. The repairs will be funded from the two thousand twenty-five supplemental L M I funds, which we have five hundred and fifty thousand.
Can you tell the audience what L M I stands for?
Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, that comes from the state P D.
So we have a grant, money given to us, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year to take care of roads and bridges, and it just so happened, we discovered we needed to fix a bridge before it became a real issue, and so it won't cost the taxpayers of Upson County any money, and we'll get the bridge fixed, is how I'm reading this. Can you throw the discussion?
Better to tackle it before it gets shut down.
And we just need a motion to approve the execution.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Jones.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Biggs.
Chairman Brew?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Okay, we are gonna have an executive session for personnel tonight, before we go into the executive session, we'll go around and have any comments, kind of manager, you got anything you would like to share? Clerk, do you have anything you would like to share?
No, sir.
Attorney?
I don't have anything, Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes, I can assure you that there hasn't been any more discussion about a data center, none whatsoever. You know, if you know me as a, as a person, I would be the one that say, if a data center was coming to your neighborhood, I would definitely let you know.
Okay, I appreciate it. They spent a lot of money, and there was two guys across the road, they said they was from Georgia Power, but they went on from Georgia Power, one of them had a sight on him, and they weren't hunters, because they didn't have a warrant, you know, I don't know what they were doing over there.
And me myself, I don't like surprises, so, so I also ask my fellow board members here, if they're in a discussion that's going on about a data center, that's anywhere area, to let me be a part of that decision-making also.
And the last discussion was to potentially have a town hall?
Yes.
Because I think the plans have changed.
Yeah.
If that property on or sold.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate it too.
Yes, sir.
Like yourself, and that town, you know...
I promise you, we won't go boo at you.
I appreciate that, I do.
Commissioner Ellington?
Uh, no, I don't have any comments.
Mr. Jones?
I appreciate everybody showed up, even people that didn't even get up and talk. And I wanna thank the judges, I know I thanked them in open session. They are, you know, and we talked to the sheriff, you know, during budget hearings today, and I think they've reduced the number of people in the jail, just this current... the number of people in the jail, just this current court session, was it like two hundred people they?
Yeah, he, he says them like, they're normally one eighty or one ninety and they got like a hundred and twenty-three out there or something like that, but it's just about half of what it normally runs.
Right, right, so this court, this court is working, I know there's a lot of people thinking, well, you know, you know, we didn't really need it, but we, you know, with one courtroom we had, uh, we just couldn't get cases pushed through. And this new Justice Center, um, is showing, you know, we reduce the people that are in the jail, that reduces the tax burden on the people. Because these people are being carried off to the state or the federal, where are they going? Instead of us housing them and paying for their food and their health and everything else. And, uh, the only other thing that I got out of that conversation with the sheriff was, uh, and, and I don't know how we can accomplish this, um, is the amount of people he's holding that are mentally incapable of trial. There's no other place for them to go, so we're, we're paying, you know, for these people to be here and there's no place for them. No hospitals can take them, no anything else, so they may sit there, I don't know how many years, and never, never get out of, get out of jail to get their court. So, you know, I don't know what to do about that, but I think somebody needs to think about what we can do with the mental capacity of the people that are sitting in our jail and, uh, that's all I got to say.
Commissioner Watson?
I don't have anything.
Hey, I'll just piggyback on Commissioner Jones, uh, I spent a lot of time with the sheriff here lately, um, and, uh, you know, the, in, the individuals in the jail, your property tax dollars paid to feed them, your property tax dollars pay for all their medications, right? It costs, uh, property tax money to have individuals in the jail, there's no other monies coming in to take care of that. Uh, and I know the Justice Center, uh, was a point of contention, uh, you know, but the, the facts are that that Justice Center is being paid for with special purpose, local option sales tax money, that's a penny, that is, we don't even think about when we go to Walmart or Home Depot, um, you know, it has like a mortgage, we have to pay it every year. But it's being paid for by everyone, even people who don't live in Upson County, who's driving through here spending money, is paying for that building. What we here in Upson County are paying for are the individuals in that, uh, jail. And so it is a benefit and it is working, and I just wanted to share that with the audience. Okay, uh, with that, um, we need to go into the executive session for personnel. Do not intend to have any votes after executive session. Can we get a motion?
So move.
Okay, I got a motion from Commissioner Jones, I say, from Commissioner Watson, to go into executive session for personnel.
Thank you all for coming.
Chairman Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.